It is 4:05 and I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Chair Duranchek.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you ma'am. Please rise for the invocation, after which we will have a moment of silence for former sheriff, John Miller, and then a pledge of allegiance.
Lord God, the strength of all who put their trust in you, we ask that you will bless this session of the Board of Commissioners this day, and that you will lead and guide this board in the decisions made, so that all citizens in this community will benefit. In your holy name we ask this, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes of nine, ten, nineteen. Who's approved?
Support.
We have motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Citizen input. Anyone from the citizen, any citizen would like to come up, just state your name and...
Good afternoon, my name is Ruth McAlpine. I'm the administrator at Bay County Medical Care Facility, and I came bearing good news about your county, Bay County Medical Care Facility. We were nominated last week by Newsweek as the number three nursing home in Michigan out of 23 nursing homes.
Wow, fantastic.
They did it on staffing, they nominated us on wound care, they nominated us on quality measures, and basically on resident survey. So, I thought that was very proud news that you would like to know as your Bay County Medical Care.
Very good.
And it's the dedication of our staff and the hard work they do to get us to where we are. And I have one more announcement. Tomorrow is our, we're gonna call it our fall into a healthier you. Calls it, it's an open house, but probably more of a partial open house because we're not quite finished yet. It's gonna be from 10 to 2. We have, can have a lot of vendors there. We're gonna have some cider and donuts, and a lot of, a lot of things for you to see, and a tour going on, so you're all welcome. Hope to see you all there. Any questions, comments?
Good job. Thank you very much. Any other citizen wish to speak? If not, we're gonna go into petitions and communications. We're gonna change a few of the rotation here because the Bay City Northwest Little League was told the wrong time, so it's, we're gonna move ahead with some of the other ones until they get here at approximately 4:30. First recognition we have is the Essexville Garber Girls Soccer Team. Ma'am, would you read the resolution, please?
I'd be honored. By the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive wish to take this opportunity to honor the Essexville Garber Girls Soccer Team on winning the 2019 Michigan Spring Girls Soccer State Championship, Division III Tournament. And whereas with a 19-game winning season, this championship was won on June 11, 2019 in their game against Regina of Warren, Michigan with a score of 1 to 0. Whereas the Essexville Garber Girls Soccer Team also won their first Tri-Valley Conference Title in 2019. Whereas throughout their entire season, the Essexville Garber Girls Soccer Team garnered impressive victories which were the result of hard work, team spirit, and focus on a goal they knew was achievable. Whereas head coach Troy Stewart and his last season after 19 years of coaching and assistant coaches, Brent Betzold and Wendy Davis, along with trainer Ashley Kesmerek, instilled in their team a sense of fair play and commitment to strive to be the best that they could be, and they succeeded. And whereas team members Isabel Baransky, Madeline Denham, Josie Funston, Rachel Hahn, Ali Klein, Katie List, Haley Moore, Olivia Dwan, Elise Walker, Natalie Van Tol, Tori Hatton, Jordan Kruski, Logan Rao, Anna Phillips, Brianna Schroder, Teagan Betzold, Raquel Hernandez, Kasia Johnson, Tiana Joyner, Brooke Thompson, and Lauren Walker, with great integrity and sportsmanship, honored themselves, their coaches, their family, and their community, securing the 2019 Michigan Spring Girls Soccer State Championship, Division III Tournament, as well as their first Tri-Valley Conference Title. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive offer congratulations to the Essexville Garber Girls Soccer Team and their coaches for their soccer achievements, and they further extend best wishes to the team members and coaches for continued success in all endeavors. Signed, Michael Duranchek, Chairman and Board. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll make that motion.
Support.
We have motion of support. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Coaches and team, come on down.
We have one slight typo. Group lost last game, so we're state finalists, finalists.
Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations.
Pride, one of them.
I got 19 on here. Take the 19.
I miss this.
Are your cheeks hurting yet?
I was walking.
Are your cheeks hurting yet?
Forget it.
Right, forget it. Oh, no, no problem. Go do this.
Violence Awareness Month in Bay County. Ma'am, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution 2019-223 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security, and for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted amongst our greatest blessings. Tragically for many Americans, these blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. Whereas an average of 20 people in the United States experience intimate partner violence every minute, and whereas an average of three women are murdered by intimate partners in the United States every day, and a person experiencing strangulation in a relationship is seven times more likely to be murdered by their partner, and according to the American Psychological Association, the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide 500 percent. And whereas, women are not the only targets. Men, children, the elderly, family, pets, and responding law enforcement officials are counted among the victims. Whereas according to a study by Break the Silence in 2006, witnessing violence is the strongest risk factor in transmitting violent behavior from one generation to the next. And whereas children exposed to violence are more likely to attempt suicide, abuse drugs and alcohol, run away from home, and be exposed to human trafficking. And whereas nearly 21 percent of female high school students and 30 percent of male high school students report being physically or sexually abused by a dating partner. Whereas young women between the ages of 16 and 24 experience the highest rate of intimate partner violence and sexual assault. Whereas domestic violence costs an estimated $8.3 billion annually in medical care, mental health services, lost productivity on the job. Domestic violence, victims lose nearly 8 million days of paid work per year in the United States alone, the equivalent of 32,000 full-time jobs. Whereas women, men, and children, living with domestic violence suffer higher rates of physical injuries, chronic health problems, depression, PTSD, attempted suicide, substance abuse, behavior problems for children, and homelessness. Whereas in an effort to end domestic violence and provide safety to victims, the Bay Area Women's Center offers free of charge services to victims and their families through emergency shelter, 24-hour crisis line, counseling, support groups, and advocacy and community education. Therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners along with the Bay County Executive proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bay County, and urge our citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence, supporting those who are working toward its end, and participating in community efforts. Signed, Michael Duranchek, Chair and Board.
Thank you. Is there someone from the women's end? Yes.
Mr. Barden, would you like to introduce the worker?
Frankie?
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the County Executive, we will pass this one.
Come over. Sorry. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Beth, if you'd like to come down and hear that.
I'm down with the motion to receive $10,000.
On behalf of Bay County, we love when you, Region 7, or anyone comes here with a check. And Beth, I'm gonna give you a minute just to, you know, like something you talked about where it's gonna go, what it's gonna do.
Yep, we bought, had to go for kitchen supplies for our kitchen, and we bought a brand-new oven, and we had to pay a whole bunch of pots and pans and thermometers and everything to help us assist as we grow. Money well spent.
Yeah, these are carryover funds from the state of Michigan, and Stacy, if you come over here, I'd like you to give them a little, tell us how the state ends and how the money is developed to get here.
Yes, we received money from the state at, or on September 17th, and then again on September 28th to spend before 9:30. And Bay County Department on Aging did an excellent job of scrambling and to help us spend that money so we don't lose it back to a different AAA. We need the money in our region, so we really appreciate the last-minute scramble to get the money spent.
There's a lot of times that Beth and I talk, always have something in the on-the-back burner, so if we get any extra money, she has a plan already put together so we can spend it. It has to be spent by a certain time.
By the end of the fiscal year.
And Stacy here does a great job of putting all that together and making sure that the counties, you know, other counties also got some money too. And some buy all of it because they can't get their plan together in time to spend it. So, this is money from the state, we're gonna spend it well.
Yep, and it was a team effort spending it.
Yes, it was.
Pat, our balance facing, anytime you have extra running.
Thanks for your willingness to help.
Pat, I thought you'd be bringing those bananas. No bananas. Yes, we have no bananas. I just received word that the Bay City Northwest Little League is here, so we're gonna go ahead and do that recognition. Madam, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 2019-222 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive wish to take this opportunity to honor the Bay City Northwest Little League on capturing the 2019 Michigan Major Baseball State Championship, the sixth major baseball state championship in Bay County history, and the third in the past five years. Whereas not since 1952, the first year of Little League in Bay City, had Bay City Northwest Little League brought home the title. Whereas with a game-winning season, the championship was won on July 24, 2019, the Northwest Little League's game against Beach Little League with a score of 8 to 2. Whereas throughout their entire season, the Northwest Little League garnered impressive victories which were the result of hard work, team spirit, and focus on a goal they knew was achievable. Whereas manager William Ruff and coaches Steve Beeson and Nick Southern instilled in their team a sense of fair play and commitment to strive to be the best that they could be, and they succeeded. Whereas team members Colton Beeson, Garrett Buzzard, Nathan Guizella, Luke Lacourse, Oliver Masters, Nick Naylor, Remington Rank, Cameron Reed, Andy Robbins, Hayden Ruff, Preston Schufelt, Braden Simmons, and Reese Southern, with great integrity and sportsmanship, honored themselves, their coaches, their families, and their community, securing the 2019 Michigan Major Baseball State Championship in Bay County. Therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive offer congratulations to the Bay City Northwest Little League, their coaches, on their season of achievements, and extend best wishes to the team members and coaches for continued success in all endeavors. Congratulations. Signed, Michael Duranchek, Board and Chair.
Motion of support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Commissioner Coonan. And Northwest Little League coaches, come on down.
Everybody in here? Everybody smiles.
Her cheeks are getting sore.
I'm Sandy. All I got is my fingers in here.
Well, Seth?
Well, I'd just like to say your congratulations, and it was almost an inning by inning that I kept up with it, thanks to social media. Yeah, we, I followed a great long group for you, so you did a great job. Commissioner, did you read anything?
Well, I played in Northwest, and I know that Little League baseball is baseball in its appearance, and I'm honored for you guys to do what you did, I know you worked very, very hard, so keep up the good work, and you got home in the league, and some of you are probably coming back early today, and you got home in the league in high school and all that good stuff, so keep up the good work, okay?
All right.
Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, Coach, congratulations. We're all following you, you've been winning and winning and winning. Great citizens.
Next on the agenda, Region, or excuse me, Great Lakes Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau Audit Presentation by Dr. Annie Romer.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Controller. I appreciate being here today. I have a PowerPoint presentation of the information that was going to be pulled up, and it's not gonna be long, all right? And I'll try not to bore you.
TV needs to be turned on.
Oh, okay.
We need the TV on.
I think Tiberia has it.
So many remotes.
I have a red button.
What is that?
I like the sound of that controller.
Thank you very much. Our law that we're governed by is Public Act 254. It does not require me to present our audited information to the County Board of Commissioners, but I think it's very important for the sake of transparency and to ensure that you're informed about how we're investing these funds. On behalf of the county, I feel it's my responsibility to report to the selected body and address any questions, concerns, let you know, you know, in as much as possible what we're doing. And quite honestly, I'm pretty proud of my team and everything that we've accomplished to date, so I just want you all to be aware of the travel industry and what we're doing here in Bay County. So, for the newer Commissioners who might not be familiar, the vision in 2009 was to take the three county convention and visitors bureaus of Bay, Midland, and Saginaw and combine them together with the sole purposes of reducing overhead expenses, increasing marketing investments, and operating in collaboration with one another, eliminating duplication of efforts. So, the flow of funds are actually gathered by the overnight transient lodging facilities in Bay County. That includes Airbnbs, bed and breakfasts, as well as the hotel facilities. The money comes directly from the hotels to the convention and visitors bureau, and I allow hotels up to $750 per quarter tax credit with receipts of, for either their Chamber of Commerce membership and/or advertising. Why do we do that? Because without a strong Chamber of Commerce organization, the convention and visitors bureau can't do our job. So, we like to be able to support the chambers, economic development, as well as our own organization. After that's taken place, I take the funds and divide the first 25 percent to pay for overhead expenses and our Bay County CVB employee. That ensures that our overhead expenses will always be 25 percent or less, and that 75 percent of the money is going into the purpose for which the organization was established. And that's a pretty good ratio if you look at operating expenses of most not-for-profit organizations. So, where did we come from? In the base year of 2009, if you look at the Bay County line, I've also added Midland and Saginaw so that you can see the revenues of all of the organizations that joined together. But in 2009, Bay County had a 2 percent assessment rate. We had about, a little better, almost $8 million in total hotel sales within the county at that point in time. The revenues that the CVB was collecting at that date was a little better than $156,000. With the change in the law, we put all three counties on an even playing field for assessment amounts, and so we're all at 5 percent. Within that first year, you see that our hotel customer expenditures increased dramatically by joining together. We had hotel customer expenditures of more than $16 million, so we took a huge jump. But if you remember, that's when the economy started to heal in the state of Michigan as well. So, I think it was a combination of the economy beginning to heal, as well as increase because of the advertising that was invested. And our CVB collections, or excuse me, that's as of today's date, in 2018, and our CVB collections went from $156,000 up to about seven times that amount in less than 10 years. So, we've gone from $156,000 up to $829,000. And so, I think that demonstrates that this effort is really successful, and it accomplished what it was supposed to. But let's go into the overhead expenses and the marketing investment to demonstrate how we have achieved our goals. The first we're gonna look at is the 2009 versus 2018 overhead expenses. In Bay County, our overhead expenses were actually $177,770. In 2018, overhead expenses were only $69,158. You might ask, hey, how did that happen? Well, we did a number of things. We were in the Pier Marquette Building, which was an absolutely beautiful facility. It had been renovated. It was palatial, fantastic. But if you look at the expenses, $177,000, and you think back on that first slide of our income, $156,000, that was not a sustainable situation. So, what I did is I made sure that our, our big county, the foundation was set. I worked with Jerome Yance, and we made sure that everyone else in the building, that the CVB lived up to our obligations, and then we relocated into a single cubicle at the Delta Planetarium. And I know that sounds very humble, but that was our way to get out of debt, and it was all... Right, next on the agenda, Region, or excuse me, Great Lakes Bay Convention and Visitors' Bureau Audit Presentation by Dr. Annie Romo.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Controller. I appreciate being here today. I have a PowerPoint presentation of the information that was going to be pulled up, and it's not going to be long, all right, and I'll try not to bore you.
TV needs to be turned on.
Oh, okay.
We need the TV on. Where's the remote?
I think Tiberia has it.
It's picture.
So many remotes. I have a red button.
Oh, I didn't realize that, what this, hey, that's that, Nick. I like the sound of that controller.
Mister.
I get it. Did you hit your little button?
Do you like your better? State Representative. Our law that we're governed by is Public Act 250, uh, excuse me, 254. It does not require me to present our audited information to the County Board of Commissioners, but I think it's very important for the sake of transparency and to ensure that you're informed about how we're investing these funds. On behalf of the county, I feel it's my responsibility to report to the selected body and address any questions, concerns, let you know, you know, in as much as possible what we're doing. And quite honestly, I'm pretty proud of my team and everything that we've accomplished to date, so I just want you all to be aware of the travel industry and what we're doing here in Bay County. So, for the newer Commissioners who might not be familiar, the vision in 2009 was to take the three county convention and visitors bureaus of Bay, Midland, and Saginaw and combine them together with the sole purposes of reducing overhead expenses, increasing marketing investments, and operating in collaboration with one another, eliminating duplication of efforts. So the flow of funds are actually gathered by the overnight transient lodging facilities in Bay County. That includes Airbnbs, bed and breakfasts, as well as the hotel facilities. The money comes directly from the hotels to the convention and visitors bureau, and I allow hotels up to $750 per quarter tax credit with receipts of, for either their Chamber of Commerce membership and/or advertising. Why do we do that? Because without a strong Chamber of Commerce organization, the convention and visitors bureau can't do our job. So we like to be able to support the chambers, economic development, as well as our own organization. After that's taken place, I take the funds and divide the first 25% to pay for overhead expenses and our Bay County CVB employee. That ensures that our overhead expenses will always be 25% or less, and that 75% of the money is going into the purpose for which the organization was established. And that's a pretty good ratio if you look at operating expenses of most not-for-profit organizations. So where did we come from? In the base year of 2009, if you look at the Bay County line, I've also added Midland and Saginaw so that you could see the revenues of all of the organizations that joined together. But in 2009, Bay County had a 2% assessment rate. We had about, a little better, almost $8 million in total hotel sales within the county at that point in time. The revenues that the CVB was collecting at that date was a little better than $156,000. With the change in the law, we put all three counties on an even playing field for assessment amounts, and so we're all at 5%. Within that first year, you see that our hotel customer expenditures increased dramatically by joining together. We had hotel customer expenditures of more than $16 million, so we took a huge jump. But if you remember, that's when the economy started to heal in the state of Michigan as well. So I think it was a combination of the economy beginning to heal, as well as increase because of the advertising that was invested. And our CVB collections, or excuse me, that's as of today's date, in 2018, and our CVB collections went from $156,000 up to about seven times that amount in less than 10 years. So we've gone from $156,000 up to $829,000. And so I think that demonstrates that this effort is really successful, and it accomplished what it was supposed to. But let's go into the overhead expenses and the marketing investment to demonstrate how we have achieved our goals. The first we're going to look at is the 2009 versus 2018 overhead expenses. In Bay County, our overhead expenses were actually $177,770. In 2018, overhead expenses were only $69,158. You might ask, hey, how did that happen? Well, we did a number of things. We were in the Pier Marquette building, which was an absolutely beautiful facility. It had been renovated, it was palatial, fantastic. But if you look at the expenses, $177,000, and you think back on that first slide of our income, $156,000, that was not a sustainable situation. So what I did is I made sure that our, our big county, the foundation was set, I worked with Jerome Yance, and we made sure that everyone else in the building, that the CVB lived up to our obligations, and then we relocated into a single cubicle at the Delta Planetarium. And I know that sounds very humble, but that was our way to get out of debt, and it was also our way to still come in closer contact with our visitors, because, believe it or not, we had a lot more interaction with the visitors at the Delta Planetarium than we did at the Pier Marquette. So we were able to accomplish our objectives much better. Since that time, we've worked with the Doubletree, as well as, I have to acknowledge, Bay City City Hall, they've allowed us to operate our organization in their lower level. Why have we done that? Because we're in the process of acquiring property, right, the former FP Horak Building. Towards the river, we were able to work, update, vacate the street that was there, and work with MDOT, and we're within days of owning that entire chunk of property where we would like to establish our permanent, long-term visitor information center right there on the river. How about marketing? How did we do there? Well, our report card here is, again, very good. In 2009, we only had $34,000 to invest in marketing. What are we doing today? So our marketing has gone through the roof, again, because we've eliminated duplication, we've reduced overhead expenses, then we've joined together with our partners, Midland and Saginaw County. So we are part of a $2.9 million advertising effort, and that was in 2018. We did see increases in revenues in 2019, so when that audit is completed, I'll come and tell you about those successes as well. We also are a certified Destinations International Convention and Visitors Bureau. There's less than 2% in the world of CVBs have achieved this accreditation. It's very, very rigorous, very seriously taken, and in fact, tonight I'll be picking up an auditor who comes in and audits the financial system to make sure there are no gaps in our financial system. So we are very rigorous and take this very seriously, but are proud to say that we are certified and accredited. And that's it. I'd like to thank you for your time and attention. Each one of you has been presented with the Bay County Convention and Visitors Bureau Audit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Biggitt.
Just had a question about Pure Michigan.
Yeah.
How did you work with Pure Michigan, and what do you foresee in the future?
Well, I would love to sit down with the Governor and have a little chat, but I think she's pretty busy right now. So, right now, the, we are a national partner with the Pure Michigan Campaign, meaning the Great Lakes Bay Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau invests on behalf of the three counties $600,000. That's matched by $600,000 of the Pure Michigan funding. As you may or may not know, the Governor did line item veto a number of items, and when I hear about things like foster homes and other human impacting programs being cut, I really don't worry about Pure Michigan. We have to worry about our people, and our police force, and our safety before Pure Michigan. However, I think at the end of the day, it'll be resolved, there will be some funding, and we will continue with our national campaign. We're just being very patient and supportive while the legislature and the executive office works through that process.
Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mike, I'd just like to make comment to Annie Romo. We've worked together for a lot of years, and I can't tell you how impressed I think everyone is, Annie, with your leadership and the impact that the convention visitors bureaus combined now have, have made in attracting people to our region to enjoy the many attractions we have, and the waterfront, and so many other things. And I'm glad I voted for this package. I know that former Representative Mays, I think, took the lead.
Yes, he did.
On changing this back in 2009, and I can remember supporting it, and I think it's, it's really been a great positive change. It's really created a tremendous impact positively on the economies of, of all three counties. So, thank you, Annie.
I, well, I thank you. I'm honored to be given that kind of accolades, but honestly, it was because of the commission here, because of the commission in Midland County, because of the commission in Saginaw County, and because of the work of a whole lot of people, including you and Jeff Mays, and people like Ken Horn and Jim Stamos. I mean, everybody joined together, they didn't, they saw the good in the effort, not in, they didn't let anything else get in the way. And honestly, it's God that blesses us at the end of the day. So I guess we must be doing the right thing, because otherwise, we wouldn't be blessed. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. This presentation was also emailed, I left the financial statements on your desk right there, and it was also, this presentation was emailed to you also, in case you want to refer back to it.
I'd make a motion to receive that presentation.
We have motion and support to receive. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Item C, public hearing on the 2020 Bay County Proposed Budget. Do I have to have a roll call in here? A motion and a roll call, please.
Some of them.
We have motion and support to go into a public hearing on the 2020 Bay County Proposed Budget. Roll call, please.
Roll call, starting with Krieger.
Yes.
Biggitt.
Yes.
Coonan.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Ryder.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We leave that open for just a little while.
See if anybody wants to come in.
Yep. Does anyone have any comments or anything? We'll leave it open for a couple of minutes, and then we'll go back in the regular order of business. In between that, we have a request for appointment to the Bay County Land Bank Authority Township Representative, which is Supervisor Ron Campbell.
Some of them.
We have motion and support to appoint Ron Campbell to the Bay County Land Bank Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Request for appointment to Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors. We have Kim Bajcik.
Some of them.
Support. Just break. Oh. She's got a lot of, can't do that much. So we're done with that?
Then you go back to your.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought we had to leave it open for half an hour or something. Old city of Pinconning ways, I guess. So, hearing no comments or anything on the Bay County Proposed Budget, I would like to go back, entertain a motion to go back into regular course of business. Roll call, or just a voice?
Just a voice is fine.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Request for appointment to Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors. Kim Bajcik.
Some of them.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Reports and resolutions of committees, Ways and Means. I've been corrected here. I need to go back and do the appointment during regular course of business to Ron, to, for Ron Campbell for the Bay County Land Bank Authority.
Some of them.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Just ready to go? Reports and resolutions of committees, Ways and Means. Commissioner Tom Harris, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring before you Resolution Number 2019-224, Road Patrol Township Contracts. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-225, Road Patrol Township Contracts for Pool Townships. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2019-226, Opposition to County Commissioner Candidate's Non-Disclosure Legislation. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Commissioner Biggitt.
I, since I'm on the Board of Mag, I called the Executive Director today, Steve Curry, and they actually have pulled their support of this resolution, it's taken off their agenda of items that they're pushing for. They are still pushing for the four-year terms for county commissioners, they've done that for several years now, but they have actually removed that request to make it a nonpartisan, they're not lobbying for it anymore. So, basically, they're viewpoint, but we can still hold on it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2019-227, the 2019 Drain Assessments. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2019-228, Civic Arena Endowment Fund. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-229, the Simco Maintenance Contract for the Civic Arena. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-230, Memorandum of Understanding with Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-231, Carryover Funding Through Region 7 AAA. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2019-232, Site Agreements with Cockholland Township and Hampton Township. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-233, Federal Transportation Planning Funds. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-234, Emergency Management Performance Grant. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-235, 2019 Bay County Apportionment. I move that resolution.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-236, Department of Agriculture Sterilization Grant. I move that resolution.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-237, the Enhanced Toxicology Screening and Opioid Protection Grant. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-238, Transfer of Reserve Funds to Family Planning Budget. I move that resolution.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-239, Non-Point Source Program Grant. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-240, the Payables. I move that resolution, I'm sorry. I was taking a little break.
Grab a drink or something.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution Number 2019-241, Budget Adjustments. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-242, Agreement with DMC Technology Group Incorporated on the AS400 System. I move that resolution.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-243, the Appraisal of County Market Properties. I move that resolution.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
That is all from the Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Personnel and Human Services, Tom Ryder, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2019-244, Fiscally here 2019 through 2020, CBC Agreement from the Health Department. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution 2019-245, Virtual Integrated Patient Records Agreement. I would move that forward.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution 2019-246, Michigan Master Assessing Officer Waiver for A Portion of City of Midland. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution 2019-247, Vacancies in the County Clerk's Office, Sheriff's Office, Juvenile Home, Office of Criminal Defense, Department on Aging, Animal Services and Adoption Center. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
That's all we have for you today, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner Ryder. From the Board of Commissioners, Michael Lutz, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring before you today Resolution 2019-248, Nonscript Report for the County Executive. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
That's all I have from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. Reports of the county officials. County Executive Jim Barsham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief. I know it's been a long meeting. So, just wanted to mention, yesterday I had the opportunity to get up and walk the Mike Gray Trail at Pinconning Park, and also the Bud Schultz Platform, beautiful view from up there, and also a chance to observe the work that's occurring on the boardwalk. It's 1,500 feet, as you know, longer feet, out, bringing people through the Pinconning Park, and I just wanted to give kudos to our maintenance staff, I don't know if John's here, but his team, they've actually elevated through three feet of water the entire boardwalk. I understand it's a very, very popular trail to use out there, and traverse through the, through the wetlands and the cattails, and it looks really beautiful, and our guys are doing a great job out there. Another thing is, clear the shelter event, maybe Craig in a few minutes would want to mention that. That'll be held this Saturday, and on a final note, Commissioner Lutz and a few others had asked me, I think Vaughn and the Chair had asked about the impact that our budget would take, assuming the Governor's vetoes of spending priorities in the state budget. We wouldn't be hurt as bad, quite as bad as some other counties, I guess, but if, if the veto stands and an agreement isn't worked out with a supplemental appropriation to replace some of the vetoed funds, Bay County would stand to lose about $586,000 in state aid that currently goes to our county jail reimbursement, our childcare fund for indirect costs, our veteran services grant, which we just received for the renovation of the, of the Veterans, Department of Veteran Affairs Office, and that's coming, coming along very nicely on first floor. If you have a chance to step in and see, it's still a work in progress, but we hope sometime near Veterans Day, hopefully to hold an open house, and host the veterans across Bay County, as well as hopefully all of you who helped make it happen. And I think that's, well, also the secondary road patrol, our Sheriff's Department would take a major hit on secondary road patrol with our deputies, the Patrol Bay County, law enforcement training grants, which I understand the Sheriff told me we do avail ourselves of, and that would be less of a cut, but, and then we lose $700 on our swap and reverted lands or pilt, payment due to taxes funding, so that'd be minimal, but I'm hopeful that between the executive branch and legislative leadership, they will, you know, work out restoring some of this funding, and particularly for our local governments, our county governments and cities, municipalities across state. So, with that, I'm not sure if I could yield to Craig, or if he just gives some details about Saturday.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barsham.
Thank you, Mr. Barshion. So Saturday, 10 to 2, we're doing a Clear the Shelter. It's a bisley event, so this is well-published, and it will be synchronized with other shelters across the state. We will be, as I stated, we'll be open 10 to 2 for adoptions. Dogs will be $25, and cats will be $15, which is a friendly reminder, if you are looking to adopt a cat, please bring a carrier. We will not have them for individuals or family members, families looking to take those, those cats home, but we'll have a lot of staff and volunteers there looking to ask questions and do a, do a matchup of personalities of sorts, and find good homes for, for these dogs and cats that are over there. So we're looking forward to a nice turnout.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business. Any unfinished business? No, new business. None? Miscellaneous. Well, I just have a couple of items here amongst all the celebration of Halloween and everything else. I'd just like everyone to know that October is also Polish Heritage Month, and today is Pirogi Day. So, to all the people out there in the snow, have a pirogi, and I wish everyone well. Another announcement, we have Land Bank Authority coming up, expiring, one three-year term expiring. Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, one three-year term. We also have in November, Building Authority, two six-year terms expiring. Land Bank Authority, one three-year term expiring. December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms expiring, districts 1,